Call to Kitty Hawk Town Council Order Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2013, Kitty Hawk Town Hall, 6:00 PM. Wanting to welcome everybody out tonight and I thank you for coming. Ask you to join in the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Up with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. We have any changes?
Motion to approve, that's promulgated.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Presentations. Police Officer Two, Brian Tyler, five years of service. Chief?
This is Brian Dean Tyler. He's a native of Currituck County, and I'm proud to say that he's a combat veteran of the US Army in Iraq. He was in the US Army from 1998 to 2004. He was a military policeman, so it obviously transferred over here in his interest was in law enforcement when he was in the military. A couple of things about Brian, he has two children, wonderful children, he brings them, shares them with us at the police department. It's great. He's married. His wife is a surgical tech at the hospitals in Virginia. He completed BLAT, Basic Law Enforcement Training, in 2005. He's been in law enforcement for awhile now. One of the great things I like about Brian is he's always eager to be involved in anything that could better the police department. Since he came to the police department, he's now our TASER instructor. He has taken over the radars, which is kind of a task, and we have about 19 radars that we utilize in our roadside radar cameras and in our police cars. He's also taken an interest in being our firearms instructor. I'm a firearms instructor, and we had some people that retired that were firearms instructors, so he's going to help me in that role. He's going to soon be going to training for that, which is a pretty rigorous training, two weeks. One of the things I can always say about Brian, there's two words, he's always ready. He's a great officer, he's great with the public, and I'm proud to have him. I can't think of anybody else. I'd like to be by my side if I'm going through the door after a bad guy. He's a great asset. Thank you all.
The next is Beach Management Concept Assessment for Coastal Planning and Engineering, North Carolina Incorporated. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to stand over here, if you don't mind, so I can run the computer. Appreciate the opportunity to come up here and go over the report with you all and answer any questions that you might have. I'm going to jump right into it. So, just an overview of what was in the report. This is basically the table of contents, but we gave a little bit of an introduction. We'll talk a little bit about what is beach nourishment at its most basic concepts. Real quickly, I want to give a little bit of background on the federal project, just so we're all on the same page as far as the terms that we're using. We'll go into a couple of these local project alternatives that we looked into, and we did a little bit of an assessment during the study. We'll talk a little bit about the possible sand sources that you might use in a potential project. That sort of plays a big role in the cost of these projects, as far as are we getting sand way off of Nag's Head, or is the sand source directly offshore of Kitty Hawk? We'll provide an alternative, I'm sorry, we'll go into a brief overview of the permitting and the environmental documentation required to move forward with one of these projects. We'll certainly get into the cost estimates, we'll talk about the schedule, we'll talk a little bit about the benefits of regional coordination. I'm sure you're well aware that the town of Kill Devil Hills and the town of Duck are both moving forward on beach nourishment projects, and some of the pros and cons of moving forward at this point in time, and possible cost savings associated with that. And then we'll wrap it up with a brief summary. So, just to give a brief overview, this is a slide we use a lot of times, just to try to help educate the public, let people understand a little bit more about what a beach nourishment project is and the concepts that we're talking about. When a beach nourishment project is first put in, we've got this little cartoon of the dredge here, there's a large slug, if you will, of sand placed, and we've got several different aspects of the beach when it's first constructed. We've got what we call the design beach, which is this wedge here, and a lot of times a design beach, such as the federal project, will also have a dune aspect to it as well. So, the design beach is basically what the engineers say you need to have in front of your houses and in front of the existing beach to give you a certain level of protection. So, even after the sand starts washing away and five years goes by before you have to put more sand on the beach, in theory, you would never lose that design. Think of it as sort of resetting the baseline. So, you've got this design beach, you've got the second portion here, and then you've got this other portion that very soon after construction, this portion is going to migrate offshore and nourish the offshore portion of the project. I know after the Nag's Head, show kind of what that, that's sort of the progression of the profile. So, now this sand that was originally placed here and looked like it had created a very wide beach, some of that sand has migrated offshore, and it's now nourishing the outer portion of the profile. And after the Nag's Head project was constructed, you know, we were following, we weren't the firm that was helping Nag's Head out on that, but we're following the press, and there was a lot of discussion about after the storm, how the beach had disappeared. But this is what basically happened, that that portion of sand that was placed there that, you know, that by design it was to move offshore and re-nourish the offshore portion of the profile, you know, that's basically what would have happened. And then this middle wedge of sand that we've got on this diagram is what's called advanced fill. So, we engineer the beach to put enough material out there in front of your design, that after we see this equilibration of the sand moving offshore, then you've got enough sand on top of your design to basically last you five to seven to 10 years, whatever the design interval is. So, in this cartoon, it says loss of advanced fill in five to 10 years, that goes away. But after that five to 10 years, you still have that design that is providing you the level of protection that you've paid for. At that point in time, it's time to do a re-nourishment, the dredge comes back, but you'll see it's only placing this portion of the material. So, a re-nourishment event is significantly less than the initial construction of the project. So, you're not putting the same amount of sand every time the dredge comes back, or you're not putting the same amount of sand as that first event. And then again, that front portion migrates offshore, and then you've got, you know, some period of time where the advanced fill is eroding away. So, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of what a beach nourishment project is. Just to go through real quickly with the federal project, as you all know, the feasibility study was completed in 2000. There were basically two components of the federal project, the south project, which basically covers Nag's Head, and then the north project, which you all are more interested in, would be 4.1 miles along both the Kitty Hawk and Kill Devil Hills section of the shoreline. And there were borrow areas identified for that project, and we'll show them here in this map. So, the south project's off of the Nag's Head project. The north project here, I've got shown this yellow bar, and you'll see the red portion of that yellow bar is basically the portion that is included in the town of Kitty Hawk. You'll also notice that there's a large portion here of the town of Kitty Hawk that was not included in the federal project. And the reason for that is that a federal project, for the federal government to spend money on one of these projects, they go through a very rigorous process to prove what the cost benefit ratio is of a project. And basically, the story is that the density of development in this northern portion of the town wouldn't justify federal participation in the project. And so, that's why the initial design left out that portion of the town of Kitty Hawk. A couple of things while we've got this map up, we want to talk real briefly about borrow areas. This is the main borrow area for both the southern project and the northern project. There was a borrow area designed up here off of the town of Kitty Hawk and off of Kill Devil Hills, but further evaluation from the Corps of Engineers showed that that material is less favorable than the material down here in S1. And even though it's further away, the quality of this material would allow you to pump less material to build, basically to get the same bang for your buck, you'd have to use less material from this site than you would here. And that's basically because there's a lot of fines in that northern borrow area, and as you're pumping that sand onto the beach, a lot of the fine grain material is running out into the water. So, you're losing a lot of material when you're pumping that. So, the way that the federal, that the federal projects design now, they would likely use this material from the borrow area off of Nag's Head, even if they were to build this northern project. Just a couple more key points, 4.1 miles along Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk. The Kitty Hawk main fill is, I'm sorry, from mile post 4.3, which is Kitty Hawk Road, down to the southern town limit, it's about a little over 5,000 feet. And then there's a 3,000-foot taper that basically, it goes from a full fill section tapering down to nothing, that's 3,000 feet long, and that taper section would end about 500 feet south of Historic Street. But that's basically the footprint of what would be called the federal project, if you were to look in at the portion within Kitty Hawk. To show that to you in another map here, these are the main fill portions for both Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk, and then you've got these 3,000-foot tapers on either side, where the fill basically tapers into the shoreline. And then, this slide here basically shows a cross-section of what the federal project design was. That'll be important, because that's kind of the upper limit of what we present as an alternative in our study. So, the NED plan, or the National Economic Development Plan, calls for a 25-foot wide berm, I mean dune, which would be constructed at a 12-foot elevation, and then it would slope down, and you'd have basically a 50-foot wide beach would be your design. And then if you think back to that slide I just showed you, this portion here is all the extra fill they would place, that would migrate offshore, and that would be basically your advanced fill. So, the design is a 50-foot wide beach in front of this design dune. What we mean by NED plan is that, as the Corps is going through these alternatives, the NED plan basically is the one that they can justify the most economic benefit, so the, it's not necessarily the cheapest project, but it's the one that shows the largest benefit. So, that's what we mean by the NED plan. The average fill density, so for every linear foot of project that we would construct along a town, it takes 151.9 cubic yards per linear foot. That's the placement rate for the federal project. Now, we'll get into the local project alternatives, just a little bit about how we develop these alternatives. You know, in order, this study, the focus of this study was to give you all a little bit of information to help you make some decisions, but we wanted to try to get through the study in a decent amount of time, because we're sensitive to trying to catch the town up to some of the efforts that are going on with Kill Devil Hills and the town of Duck. So, in doing that, we took basically a lot of the engineering analysis that had been done by the Corps of Engineers. We also looked at some of the erosion rates that had been documented by the state of North Carolina, and we looked at those as far as engineering considerations. And then we also, we want to consider our financial considerations as well. So, we're kind of looking at a range of scales of costs, and that's kind of how we've summed everything up in the end. We also want to focus on a project that would cover the town's entire oceanfront shoreline. So, we're not just looking at the footprint of the federal project, we're looking at all 3.5 miles of the town limit. The focuses of these alternatives are basically three, to provide storm damage reduction to public infrastructure, including NC-12, a lot of the cross-streets that go from 158 to NC-12, and obviously, public utilities, sewer, electrical, any utilities that could be taken out as some of these, as some of the roads and dunes are taken out. Also, I know you all just finished a study looking at flooding in the town. Certainly, that's something that beach nourishment could help out with. Reduce the frequency of overwash and flooding events. Obviously, some of the flooding is from rainfall and drainage, but certainly, the portion of that flooding that occurs because of overwash, you would expect to get a reduction in that amount of flooding of the interior portions of the town, including NC-12 and Highway 158. And then finally, you'd also obviously provide some storm damage reduction to private properties east of Highway 158 within the town limits. So, we're really, I'm sorry, we're primarily looking at two town-wide alternatives. The first we call an erosion mitigation project, which looked at extending the existing shoreline, basically 40 feet out. So, I guess you could say our design of the project would be a 40-foot wide beach in front of what you have today. And then we would place five years of advanced fill on top of that. And that's kind of the scale of what the Nag's Head project that was recently constructed, that's very similar to the design that was implemented there. And then the second alternative would be a more robust project comparable to what was looked at by the federal government, a storm damage reduction project, where we'd have both a larger fill and a dune, a dune design. We'll briefly go through each one of these. So, the erosion mitigation project, it's again, a town-wide project, 3.5 miles long. It would extend the shoreline 40 feet, place five years of advanced fill on top of the design beach. The total volume that we'd be looking at there is about 1.4 million cubic yards of material, and the fill density there would be about 74.9 cubic yards per linear foot. So, that's about half of what we were talking about for that federal project. That's really in the ballpark for the average fill density that they did along Nag's Head. There was quite a range between what they placed down at south Nag's Head and up in the northern portion, but on average, they placed pretty close to 70, 75 cubic yards a linear foot. So, what that would look like, if we go back to the same sort of schematic, the dredge comes in, here we've got the design beach of 40 feet. Once the project was constructed, this portion would move offshore to re-nourish the offshore portion of the profile, and basically, after five years, this advanced fill would be washed away, and at that point in time, you would come back and place, you know, basically the sand that you've lost, and that would be your re-nourishment cycle every five years. So, if we move into the storm damage reduction project, this is more comparable to the federal project. Again, it's town-wide. We'd construct a 25-foot wide dune at elevation plus 12 feet. We would construct a 50-foot wide berm in front of that dune at elevation six feet, which is pretty much where your dry beach is now. That project would basically, since the fill density is twice, the volume is basically two times. So, we're in the neighborhood of 2.8 million cubic yards of material required to construct this project. We've kind of gone to a different little diagram here. This will be comparative to what we showed in the cross-section of the core project, but we've got a little bit nicer-looking dredge in this one. So, right after the project, the beach would look about 175 feet wider, and you'd also have this dune constructed in front of what's there now. But over time, that sand would start moving offshore, and this is basically what you would be left with after the five-year period. You'd have your 50-foot wide berm, you'd have your 25-foot wide and 12-foot high dune, you know, and that would slope all the way down to the offshore portion of the profile. And then at a five-year interval, you would come back and you would re-nourish the project. Real briefly, we'll talk, I mentioned that S1 borrow area, this blue line here highlights the town limits of Kitty Hawk approximately. S1 is down here off of the town of Nag's Head. There was, originally, they had estimated about 70 million cubic yards of sand for that borrow area. They've used about five for the Nag's Head project. So, there's plenty of sand left in that borrow area that could be used. One of the things that our firm is under contract to do right now for both the town of Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk are to look at this area here, borrow area, or Area 1 and Area 5. There's some USGS data that exists for these areas that suggests there may be compatible sand in these two areas, and if we were to identify that compatible sand, just the distance, the difference in distance from these two borrow areas to a project in Kill Devil Hills or in Duck would reduce the cost of the project significantly. So, actually, if the weather holds up this week and into the weekend, we're going to be having divers out in the water, looking at a couple of these areas, taking some samples and try to determine whether, you know, it warrants further investigation, or whether we should concentrate our borrow area efforts in this S1 area that's sort of a known quantity based on the Corps of Engineers' research. This slide basically just goes over some of the permitting and environmental documentation required. We had, as part of the contract, we had an interagency meeting in Washington, North Carolina in June. It was very well attended, plus we had represented, John was there, representatives from the town and the town of Kill Devil Hills and Duck. So, it was a good forum to discuss some of the possibilities of cost sharing and how we might be able to combine efforts and not recreate the wheel on some of these environmental documents. So, one thing to note for the permitting, a project like this would both require a state permit, a major KAMA permit, and a federal permit. The Department of the Army or the Corps of Engineers would issue a permit. There's also a number of approvals that we'd get, that we would need to get from state and federal agencies. And then there's basically three main documents that we would have to develop, an environmental assessment, an essential fish habitat assessment, and a biological assessment. So, as we go and get into cost estimates, we've broken down the cost estimates into two primary tasks. The first is the design and permitting. This is basically the phase that Kill Devil Hills and the town of Duck are in now. So, in order to get through the design and the permitting phase, we've sort of listed out the tasks here, based on some of the tasks that are required for the other two towns in Northern Dare County that we're working with. The engineering analysis, beach profile surveys would be conducted, geotechnical and geophysical analysis, we'd have to go out there and run some geophysical surveys in the borrow areas, take vibrocores in the borrow areas, that environmental documentation that I just mentioned, and then filing the permit applications. And I've got this quote from the report, it says, "Based on similar projects completed in the state of North Carolina, the estimated cost for design and permitting phase could range between $550,000 and $1.12 million." And that's basically, right now, we've sort of gotten the green light on this environmental assessment being required for the environmental documentation. There's also, they could elevate that after we finish the environmental assessment requiring environmental impact statement, which could drive that cost a little bit higher. Plus, the level of investigation that's needed in the offshore area right now, until we finish the survey that we might be doing later in the week, it's tough to put an exact figure on what that's going to look like, how many vibrocores will be needed, how big of a survey area we'll have to look at. So, that's why we've got this large range. These two areas are areas I've highlighted because there's a possibility for cost sharing. So, all of the work that would be required in the offshore area, the geophysical surveys, the vibrocore surveys, as well as the development of these environmental documents, there's a good chance that we could cost-share some of those efforts with the other two towns that are moving forward. Right now, the town of Kitty Hawk, of Kill Devil Hills and the town of Duck are cost-sharing some of their efforts associated with the environmental documentation. They're not yet under contract for these tasks here until we finish this recon survey that I mentioned, we'll probably be doing later in the week. So, as we get into the larger numbers, the construction costs, up here at the top as a placeholder, we put 1.12 million for design and permitting. Remember, that was the upper range of the numbers that we just listed here. So, we've got mobilization and demobilization, let me back up here for a second. We've got four different columns here. We've got, if we were to use borrow area 1, which is one of those areas that we'll be doing the reconnaissance surveys for, which is the area right off of Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, you'll see down at the bottom, those costs are comparatively less than these other two columns over here. The difference is, the borrow area is much closer for the area that's right off of Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk. These second two columns assume we're going to use that borrow area down off of Nag's Head. And then we further split up those two options, borrow area 1 and borrow area S1, which is the area off Nag's Head, between the two different types of projects we looked at. The erosion mitigation, again, was just the widening of the beach by 40 feet, and then the storm damage reduction project, which you'll remember is about twice the volume, includes the dune and a little bit wider beach. So, we've really got four different cost estimates. So, as we go down on the left, we've got mobilization costs, we have fill placement costs. We've added a 15% contingency to that. We've also provided estimates for some of the pre-construction services and during construction services. So, when we get down to the final here, the erosion mitigation projects, which is just widening the beach by about 40 feet, that could range, depending on the borrow area, between 16.8 million and 20 million, if you will, 19.9 million. And then the upper limits of the projects we'd be looking at would be the storm damage reduction projects, anywhere from 28.3 million to 34.4 million. So, again, those numbers were sort of given as bookends between sort of the smallest project we'd be, we'd feel comfortable that, you know, would be effective to, you know, all the way up to what the Corps had designed. And further evaluation would certainly be warranted to try to zone in on, you know, the most feasible option there. Real quick on regional coordination, I've already talked a little bit about some of the cost-saving opportunities, but just to put some numbers on it, the environmental documentation, we've estimated somewhere between maybe $25,000 to $40,000 savings if we could move into the process and kind of synchronize this project with what's going on in Kill Devil Hills and the town of Duck. The sand search investigations, again, depending on how big the survey areas that we'll ultimately be investigating are, it could range from tens of thousands to even greater than $100,000. Beach profile surveys, you could see some cost savings there. And then construction, we really just have that question, or, you know, millions of dollars. We've run through some simulations and hypothetical scenarios for the county who's working on some cost models right now for, you know, how they would provide funding to the three towns. And we did a project that looked at placing about 100 cubic yards a linear foot, and I think if we were to build that project along the town of Kitty Hawk, the difference between Kitty Hawk building it on its own and building it in tandem with the town of Duck and the town of Kill Devil Hills was about $2.5 million. So, again, that's a hypothetical, but it seems to be sort of in the range of what we're talking about. That was 100 cubic yards a linear foot. We're talking anywhere from 75 to 150 cubic yards a linear foot. So, that's kind of a scale of what could be realized by trying to join up the projects. We also discussed, actually, credit to John, he had brought to my attention that the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management was looking at doing some regional reconnaissance surveys off of the coast of North Carolina. This is associated with some funding they got in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy. But we started having some conversations with some of the folks, and in the end, the word from Boem was that in-kind services, we could try to go through the process, but it would be unlikely that they would give those services, just because we'd be looking at a very detailed analysis of a very specific site, and they'd be looking at, you know, very wide-spaced reconnaissance-level studies of a much larger area. So, even if we were to say, well, we'll give you the data we're going to survey, you know, in this area, it really didn't help them tie in the adjacent areas and things like that. So, we provided a copy of that email. You know, it's certainly something we could chase down a little bit more, but, you know, Boem didn't have a very warm and fuzzy about that possibility. The schedule here, this is the same schedule that was provided in the report. I guess the take-home here is that in this scenario, we're looking at the possibility, the earliest possible start of construction sometime at the end of 2015. We've updated some schedules recently for the town of Duck and the town of Kill Devil Hills, which suggests that construction could potentially start as early as August 2015, but I think that's probably a pretty aggressive timeframe. I think as far as managing expectations, I think 20- I think as far as managing expectations, I think 2016 is a very safe bet as far as what it's going to take to move these projects through. Some of these items could be condensed a little bit, but as far as, you know, if we were to try to move in tandem, or even move, you know, on your own schedule, I think, you know, we have kind of a starting point of right now, September, and we're talking, you know, the end of 2015. So, you know, if you're to delay that process forward, you know, if you're to add six months, just add six months on the back end, and that would stay fairly linear. So finally, the summary, permitting and design costs, again, somewhere between 550,000 to 1.2 million. That process would take approximately 16 months. The initial construction could be anywhere from 15.2 million to 32.8 million, depending on the fill densities and the different borrow areas that might be used. Construction estimated for 2016, and the potential for cost savings through coordination of efforts is very promising, especially from Kill Double Hills and Duck, and obviously cost sharing on the county's part as well. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
The only questions I had were based on the minutes of that meeting in Washington. And I never, I never could get from the discussion whether or not that environmental assessment was really going to satisfy that, the requirement. There were several who said, well, you have to, one guy said, you have to write that as though you were going to incorporate some environmental impact statement requirements. And then there were a whole load of acronyms that I had no idea what they were, SARBA and SARBO.
No problem. I don't know, I don't know what some of them are.
Yeah.
I have to check. But the, excuse me, the take-home there is that I think at the end of the day, our environmental assessment document, as far as the thickness and the content, is probably going to look a lot like an environmental impact statement. The difference is, there's, there are more triggers and commenting periods, and there are more agencies that would get to comment and, you know, have oversight in the process when you go through the environmental impact statement process. So if you can move through the EA, it's basically a smaller, you know, it's a, it's a shorter time period, if you will. But I suspect that the same level of information would probably go into both, both documents. I think that's basically what he was referring to, that at the end of the day, this EA may be, you know, the same size as an EIS, but if we can avoid some of these additional, you know, commenting periods and points in the process, then we can speed the process up a little.
And they did, they did seem to believe that it was possible for us to do that.
That's right.
I got the impression that Nagshead actually had to do an environmental impact statement.
They did, they did do through an EIS, and most of the projects that we've worked on in North Carolina have gone through an EIS. It's getting to the point now, though, that, I guess in the beginning, like maybe right in the late 90s and early 2000s, there were a couple of projects that were built that didn't turn out very well. And so they really started flamping down, and everything after that, it was, you know, we're going to do an EIS, we're going to do an EIS. But now the agencies have seen the same information and the same impacts over and over, that they're more comfortable with the situation. And so for some, some areas where you've got existing data, especially for this project in Kill Double Hills, where the Corps already has written an EIS on a very similar project, that basically we've, we've said, look, we can use the environmental information that Nagshead developed and the environmental information that the Corps developed, and this is all very relative, relevant to a project at Kill Double Hills, or Kitty Hawk, or even Duck. So the agencies have seemed to agree with that, and, you know, we'll, we're going to move forward with the EA process. And, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the Corps' decision. They could say, sorry, you know, we can't move forward with this EA, you guys have to write us an EIS. So we'll have to package that all into a, into a different document, start some of these, you know, some of this process through. But, you know, we're, everybody's saying all the right things at this point in time to suggest that it's probably, you know, reasonable to move forward in the EA direction.
And the other question I have is about the cost sharing with Duck and Kill Double Hills. In the, in the document, it stated that Kitty Hawk would have to kind of get on board here with this, like tonight, or...
Maybe not quite, maybe not tonight.
Yeah, or certainly in the month of September. And I guess my question is, if it turns out that it is just not possible laws of physics or whatever, or some of the, some of the requirements that the town would have for the process involved in that, what is the chance that we could still get some benefit from the engineering and permitting?
Right. I think the, the engineering is going to, I mean, I guess you mean the services in general. The engineering will be pretty unique to each specific project. The environmental documentation, there's probably still some possibility of some of that 25 to $40,000 cost sharing, because a lot of it is taking background information that's going to go into the same, you know, all three of these reports, it's the same background information that's going to go in. We basically figured out how much it would take to develop that background information, and how much is, you know, actual town-specific information. So we came up with one number for the background information, and we said, well, you know, we could, just Kill Double Hills could pay for it, or both Kill Double Hills and Duck could pay for it, or if Kitty Hawk and Kill Double Hills and Duck pay for it, you know, it would be that. So that's kind of how we're doing that background, and that, that would probably still stand even if you, you know, pushed it, you know, say beyond Christmas. The bigger ticket item upfront would be the geophysical and geotechnical surveys, because it's going to require us to mobilize some pretty big crews and big boats and get some offshore work in. I suspect that the other two towns are probably going to start doing that work sometime November, December, even though that's probably not the best time to be working up here. But I suspect that we'll be looking at weather windows in the wintertime to try to do some of that work. And if, if you, if you all can't make a decision until after that work is through, then, you know, you'd be on your own, basically, paying for the mobilization of those crews to come into the area and do that work. So that's kind of the cost sharing that's involved with that work. I don't think that a decision needs to be made by September. Now that we're looking at these schedules, and it seems more and more unlikely that 2015 isn't realistic and that the construction will probably occur in 2016, we've got some months to kind of play with in the schedule. But the real kicker is how soon are they going to be ready to move forward with that offshore geophysical work? And like I said, I think that's probably going to start sometime in November. So I think you've got more than a couple of weeks, but, you know, by Christmas time, it may be, you know, we may have to reset the clock.
And the only other thing is, the, the statement regarding the need for storm damage reduction for utilities, the highway, the public infrastructure, being the real or the most, the highest priority for the town of Kitty Hawk, there, I thank you for making the changes in your presentation. But also, this document is probably going to have some distribution.
Right.
And I think there are about three, at least three instances of a revision that would be required. Is that something that you can kind of handle real, very quickly?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. I have some questions.
Sure.
And as you know, our editor-in-chief has brought us up to date.
It's always nice to know somebody read your mind.
And I, and I tell you, it's great.
Can you go back to those fill areas, those potential borrow areas? Okay. The first question deals with the fact that the areas off Kitty Hawk that you're looking at, most seriously, are in federal waters.
That's correct.
As opposed to N1, which I presume means north borrow one.
Right.
Which is in state water.
Right.
Now, the report says that's fine, except when you look on the beaches of Kitty Hawk, everything is kind of a real heavy sand gravel.
Right.
It makes you wonder about that. But if you go offshore into federal waters, does that complicate things, whereas staying on the inside of the three-mile limit would be less costly, less complication?
It does. So that's, that's something that, that's one of the main driving reasons that we had that meeting down in Washington, because we really wanted to get a better understanding of the Boem process. And I think we got a little better understanding of the Boem process. We probably, it's probably not crystal clear. I can say that our environmental folks have already begun the process of starting to coordinate efforts with Kill Double Hills, and we've been very pleased with the back and forth, they're very forthcoming. At the end of the day, there seems to be one more review process that, for this, this, the fact that the borrow area will be in federal waters, that final review, there's some question as to whether or not the National Marine Fisheries Service, you know, may drag on that final assessment a little bit longer than some of the projects where we've seen them in state waters. So that's kind of a wild card right now. We've got about six months built into our schedule for, once we complete all of the documents and submit them as final, and they're published in the federal registry for the, all the agencies to look at that. And, you know, Boem's kind of saying that some of these, some of these projects where they look at offshore sand could potentially go beyond that six months. So again, we've got, you know, some time built into the schedule even to deal with that. That's real, to this point in time, that's really the only, you know, added level of coordination that we've seen. There's a few extra data reporting requirements for when you're actually collecting data in the federal waters. We have to apply for certain permits, but, I mean, they're fairly, they're fairly negligible efforts when you're looking at, you know, 550 to a million dollars in services. So it could be, it could be a time thing, probably more than a cost thing. And as we get further down the road, I think that's something to consider when we look at the difference between costs of, you know, going down to that area in Nagshead and trying to develop one of these borrow areas that's closer.
All right. Now, information on N1 is kind of old information. Will there be a second quick look just to confirm that?
It is old information. When I showed that, that profile where the sand kind of migrates out into the offshore, that N1 would be far enough beyond that, that it's really not in that active area. So N1's probably, it's probably about a mile offshore. You wouldn't expect that material to change a lot. We've certainly looked through the data that was provided to us by the Corps of Engineers and agree with their assessment that the material's pretty fine. It's, you know, it's, the mean grain size is significantly finer than the coarser stuff that you mentioned that's on, on the beach out here. So when we first started working with Kill Double Hills, we did an analysis to say, you know, what would be the best borrow area? And we were shocked to find out that because the material in S1 is so much more compatible, it's so much coarser than that area in N1, that it would literally be cheaper to pump basically half the material that would be required if they used N1 from that far further borrow area. And we could justify, there'd be a cheaper project to break the sand from S1 than to use that sand that's right offshore. So we've, we've looked at it a fair amount. We're pretty comfortable that it really is pretty fine sand. And we see other vibrocores, these black dots on this map are other vibrocores that have been taken. What you see is anywhere where there's not some kind of a bathymetric high, like this area inside of one, or even this kind of ridge that runs through five, anywhere that it's, you know, just kind of bare earth, you know, substrate out there, it's pretty fine material. It doesn't take long to get down into, you know, real muddy, muddy material that you wouldn't want to put on the beach.
Okay. All of your figures are based on summer pumping, not winter? All the construction costs, those sort of things?
That...
Not given engineering? I understand you're going to do some of that in the winter, but...
That's right.
The heart of the project is all based on summertime pumping?
Right. All the estimates that we've done, the estimates that went into this and, you know, most of the recent estimates we've done, we calibrated the cost estimating program with the information that we got from the Nagshead project and some things they've done recently in Virginia Beach. So, yeah, they're, they're looking at pretty much, you know, summertime dredging.
Could you go back to the basic fill and sacrificial fill slide, please? All right.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, good.
Okay.
All right. From what I've read in the information both you've provided and other information I've been able to come up with, it looks like the state in general, maybe the federal, are looking at five-year windows as a renourishment, kind of as a basic rather than something longer term. Is that correct?
I don't think the state, I mean, you're talking about things like the beach inlet management plan, the BIM plan and things like that.
Yeah, things like that.
I think they probably leave that up to the engineer. I mean, certainly, you, you want to look for the longest interval possible. You know, if you're thinking over a 30-year time, obviously, if you have to do something every five years, you know, to your house, it'd be better to have to do that only 10 years, every 10 years, you know, especially if the costs were about the same. The problem you get into here is you could put more advanced fill on top of that beach, but the more you, the more you build out that beach and you create kind of an artificial bulge on a, on a straight shoreline, Mother Nature wants to straighten that shoreline. And so you could put, you know, 600-foot-wide beach out there, but that sand is going to erode so fast that you couldn't justify putting that much sand out there. So it's, it's a diminishing return at some point in time, and that's kind of the balancing act of the engineering, to figure out, you know, can we go six years? Could we go seven years? You know? And, and it'll be designed for one thing, but in reality, it'll be kind of a wait-and-see type of thing, like Nagshead right now. You know, they're, they're talking about, will they have to re-nourish in 2016? Maybe, but maybe they don't have to do it until 2017 or 2018. Maybe they have to do it next year. So it's kind of a, you design it based on the information you get and you monitor it every year.
And, and from what I gather, if, if you want FEMA to come in and re-nourish at some point, you have to have a plan documented that you're going to do renourishment at a certain interval.
That's right.
Otherwise, you're on your own. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if, if your renourishment interval was, was five years or so, and you had a storm that came through two years into the process, and it took all of your advanced fill away and even destroyed some of your design, you could apply to FEMA at that point in time to say, hey, you know, before the storm, I had this much sand, now I've got this much. And they'll, they'll, they can reimburse you for the amount to put it back the way it was, you know, before the storm. So the project that had already been there for two years, you've already lost some sand, but they'll pay to put it back, you know, the way it was before the storm came through.
And that plan would be part of what you design into the town for Duck?
That's correct. Some, some of our clients have asked for a specific plan at the end of the day, once we get finished with all the permitting. And, you know, it would be updated every year as you do, as you do beach profiles, and you say, well, this is how much sand we have left. It's kind of a work in progress. But, yeah, that, that plan, once the engineering analysis was done, that would be the crux of, of the plan. Then you talk about the actual construction and update it as needed.
Okay. Easements. Where the federal project, which was the bulk of Kitty Hawk, north of Kitty Hawk Road, was not programmed in, I'm not aware of any easements. Is part of what you do part of that, or is that a separate issue?
It is. We usually don't get into the easements, you know, that, that would be an attorney that would, that would help out with, you know, with that, that portion. We've, we've had a lot of discussions with some of the folks down in Kill Double Hills and even some of the folks down in Nagshead to try to figure out what was done. I think, I think the town of Nagshead, the county actually assigned the easement that was established for the federal project to the town. So the town was able, in most cases, to use that easement that was established for the federal project. But you bring up a good point, that only a portion of Kitty Hawk is within the federal project, so that would have to be looked into.
And we would, somebody else would have to do that.
Correct.
Environmental monitoring. It's almost certain that some of that, and when I say environmental, I'm not talking about washing away of the advanced fill and those sort of things. I'm talking about, what do they call them? Benthic creatures, that sort of thing?
Benthic, yeah, benthic organisms.
Is that something that's almost a guarantee for in perpetuity? How long would that go on, that sort of thing? Do you have a basis to know what they require?
Yeah, I mean, we know what they required for the town of Nagshead. It's, again, it's one of those things where the more projects that we build, and, you know, the agencies up here don't like to hear about, well, in Florida, you know, they've done this for 30 years, they know the answer, and they say, well, this is North Carolina, you know, we need to do it up here. But it's almost getting to the point where... But it's almost getting to the point where we've done it for long enough in North Carolina, too. And so, you know, a lot of our focus is to do the literature review, to look at what's been done, to look at what trends have been established. Nag's Head's been doing a lot of monitoring. It'd be real hard for somebody to argue that the environment in Kitty Hawk is different than the environment in Nag's Head. So we would hope that we'd be able to use that, as, as much data as possible to minimize the amount of monitoring. That said, if something, you know, unforeseen comes up, if close by to the offshore borrow area, there's rock out crops or, you know, we, we find something that's of, of specific environmental concern, there's always the, the chance that, you know, we'd have to do some monitoring for that. But as far as digging up a sandy borrow area and placing it on a beach, you know, most of those effects are pretty well documented. We'd hope that we'd be able to, to minimize that. And that's why we put sort of a relatively small number in the report from 100,000 to 500,000, you know, because we're hoping that we can, we can minimize any, any monitoring that's going to be required. Plus, any monitoring that's going to be required for one of these projects will likely be required for all three. So, you know, if there's borrow area monitoring, you know, hopefully that could be cost shared with the other communities.
I'm, I'm always interested to understand that we can beach push without monitoring, but if we pump sand on the beach, we have to monitor.
Yep.
Kind of makes you wonder about which way we're going then. I think you've answered most of my questions and most of them were put to you for the benefit of the audience.
That's great.
So that we could better understand what's going on here. I appreciate explaining basically, part of that's going to wash away in its appearance at least, and the base design, and we have to keep that in focus, the base design. The two other points that I want the audience to fully understand is the erosion mitigation versus the storm damage reduction. The two are very much linked. They both apply to us in the town of Kitty Hawk as far as trying to mitigate damage to the, everything east of 158. I mean, that, that's what this project is about. This is a needs base. We're not necessarily trying to save a house on the ocean. We're trying to save much, much more than that. And that's an important component to anything you address. That's what this council is concerned about for our citizens. So please keep that in the back of your mind.
Will do.
And I thank you very much. It's a good presentation. I hope the audience has learned something. I've certainly learned a lot about it. And, uh...
You've got more to learn.
We'll keep looking for money. That's all we can do. Thank you.
Sure.
So your timeline, then if you're looking at the summer, summer timeline, you're probably looking at 2016 summer?
That's correct.
Of actually nourishing.
That's correct. I, I, some of the schedules, like I said, that, that we recently developed for, for the other two towns, they have us maybe putting out bids as early as the summer of 2015. And, you know, we would have to, we would have to take a look at, you know, the, the status of each of the three beaches. And, you know, is everybody in agreement that we can wait one more hurricane season or we can wait, you know, one more winter season? You know, if there was a reason, we could put a timeframe on the dredgers and say, you know, no, we, we've got to have this thing done by Christmas or something. But the more, the more of a window you can give the dredgers, the better the price, most of the time, the better the price will be. Because it basically would allow them to, you know, if something came up while they were building the project and they knew they could go off somewhere else and make a bunch of money and then come back and finish the project, they like that flexibility. Whereas if you say, I need this built in four months, and they know it's going to take three months, they can't leave. You know, they've got to, they've got to stay concentrated on that work and they can't look at any other projects. So I think it'd be very favorable to be able to get that bid out at the end of, or, you know, towards the end of the summer of 2015 and tell the dredgers, you know, look, you've got, you know, 13 or 14 months to build this project. You build it when you think you can, you know, make the most money off of it. And, you know, that, that, that should get you the best price rather than telling them, we've got a, a three-month window that we need this thing built. So.
It would be stretching to try to do it in the wintertime or storm season.
That's kind of what Nag's Head ran into. The dredgers basically said, you know, if we were restricted to the, to the, to the winter only, nobody would even bid it or the cost would be, you know, it would be cost prohibitive.
Didn't Nag's Head have to get a special permit though for the turtles and all of that? But that was, that's something that you wouldn't have, have any problem getting for...
That's right. So we, we've had a lot of those discussions with the agencies, even before this, this June meeting. We had a meeting last year, I think, with, with Kill Double Hills only. And we brought up that, that issue and, you know, they, they said, you know, we're going to have to go through sort of the same process, but that even with just going through the EA, we thought, they thought that we could make the case. Nag's Head had to do a lot of monitoring while they were doing that project. So all of that monitoring, we can use to say, you know, look, they, they have specific mitigative protocol that they used. We'll use the same mitigative protocol. You know, if we have to trawl in front of the dredge, that's what we'll do. But it worked very effectively for Nag's Head. So, you know, why, why can't it be used in this project?
And we're far enough north of that that we have less of those issues than they had south of us. So we should be able to get something like that.
Richard? I've got a couple of questions, but the first one you answered was basically, you're saying that you get into this project, it's a recurring thing. Theoretically, every five years, you're going to redo the same thing. I guess that leads us to my second question. A little diagram that you did, it's a kind of a cross-section. You said the, the sand ends up from the upper part, it ends up down the lower part. When you start the second project, say in five years, and you're going to try and go replenish it again, are you going to dredge? Would you dredge the sand from the lower part or would you go back to the original place where you got the sand?
Right. So, so usually when you're looking at a borrow area, you basically would cut off the area that you would look at. You wouldn't look any shallower than this area here because you'd basically be Robin Peter to pay Paul. You wouldn't want to take any of the sand that's already placed out there because that's, that's part of the new profile, basically. If you take that sand away, then something from up here needs to replace that sand. So you'd always be looking further offshore than whatever you're calling your depth of closure. In this, in this diagram, it's about the minus 20-foot contour. So wherever the engineers say that, that, they call it the depth of closure, which is basically, you know, the, the point offshore where sand doesn't normally move, you know, offshore, onshore. You know, that, we would want to stay beyond that depth, you know, deeper than that depth to design a borrow area.
That's, sorry.
Yeah, what, the, the sand that goes offshore would decrease the amount of roughness actually on the shore itself, we think.
The, the roughness? I'm sorry?
Well, yeah, the, the break, in other words, the, the sea would, would...
That's right.
Would be shallow or so, you'd have less, less wash on your beach with the sand that went offshore. I mean...
That's right. So in, in nature, Mother Nature wants this profile to, to, to look like this for whatever re... It's mostly, mostly driven by the wave climate.
Right.
So if we put sand up here and you've got a whole bunch of sand up here but none out here, Mother Nature's going to want to redistribute it to make sure that the, you know, the outer profile, this line basically, looks the same as it did before you put that profile in. But you're right in the, in the sense that a lot of people look at, let me get to this other diagram. A lot of people look at this dune as the, as your, you know, storm damage reduction. But, you know, all this sand that you're putting out in front of the dune, that's going to trip those waves up before they ever hit your dune. So the whole design is part of the, you know, reducing the damage from a storm. It's not just the dune.
The offshore sand is, is really what we're missing that, that used to be there, it's not there. So...
But the, the whole profile has probably eroded back.
Yeah.
And that's what we're, we're trying to not only replace the, you know, the, the, the part of the sand that the tourists would go out and sit on, but also that offshore portion of the profile. We have to replace all of it.
No? I'm busy.
Everybody's good? Okay. We thank you very much. It was very good.
Thank you.
And hopefully we'll be talking with you soon.
Great.
Okay. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comment, Lynn?
No one has signed up.
Anyone want to speak at public comment? Okay. Consent agenda. Any changes? A motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent, the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. No items removed from consent agenda? And then next is public hearing. And we have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is a zoning amendment. And Joe, you want to come up and summarize it?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Perry, members of council, members of the public in attendance tonight. What we have before us this evening for the public hearing is a request for a zoning amendment, a proposal to rezone a portion of the property at 108 Ascension Drive from the Beach Commercial, BC1 District, to the Beach Residential, BR1 District. I mean, you can see the property outlined here in red on the zoning map showing the extent of the commercial area here along Croatan Highway. Croatan is the large gray road at the bottom there. And you can see how the commercial area comes in at this point. And you can see all of the remaining area here in the, the white or light gray is the residential zoning. So you can see how that, that property looks on the zoning map. I did want to point out that this is a, something that the council probably be seeing a little more of in the future. But this, this rezoning application is not a specific request from a property owner, although the property owner has expressed his support for it. This was part of a, a larger effort by the town of Kitty Hawk to clarify our zoning map by looking at district boundaries, particularly areas where we have split zone property like this. Because what we found is that for a variety of reasons, split zone parcels often carry some challenges with them for development and, you know, looking at how they develop in the future, as this one did. So in doing that, the town approached the property owner, and we've actually dealt with a couple of different owners over the, the course of this application, and discussed the matter with the owner, explained why there was an, an interest in the town's part in clarifying zoning on this. And the, the property owner did express their support for the rezoning to change this property to be entirely residential instead of that split zone. Property is .4 acres in size, almost, you know, 17,600 square feet in size. At the, the original time of writing with this application, it was completely undeveloped. Subsequently, the property owner has applied for and obtained a building permit and begun construction of a single-family residence on the property. I'm just showing, this is a little more detail, showing the, the zoning boundary. You can see where it begins and how it proceeds diagonally across the subject property. The commercial portion is this area to the east. The residential is this area. The house being built presently straddles that, that zoning line. We do have properties immediately to the west. As you can see, you have a part of a larger neighborhood here with Ascension Drive. This is all part of the Kitty Dunes Height subdivision, which was one of the first subdivisions that was ever done in the town of Kitty Hawk back in 1981. And you can see a majority of that's residential and has developed with single-family residential houses. But what you also have here on adjoining parcels, the property directly to the east in this blue area, as you can see, is entirely zoned beach commercial, presently undeveloped. The property located across the street here in this area, just south on Ascension, is also zoned commercially and presently undeveloped. The area, just as a landmark for, for those who aren't familiar with the area, this is the, the Sweet Frog is right here at the corner. So you do have commercial development along the properties that front, but you do have these two other parcels that are located behind those commercial properties along Croatan Highway. In looking at the, the two districts, just wanted to give a, you know, general idea of what, what this rezoning would mean. The Beach Commercial District with present zoning allows a, you know, variety of residential uses, institutional uses, but also office and commercial uses. This is the predominant commercial district that you see up and down Croatan Highway. So, you know, with that in mind, if you, you know, you look and think about what has developed along Croatan Highway and, you know, those are the types of uses that this, this district would permit. The proposed zoning Beach Residential is a mainly single-family residential district. It, it does allow a few associated uses, a couple of institutional uses such as churches and schools. You know, probably unlikely on a property of this size, but it would allow that type of thing as well. Pardon me. One of the things, let me, usually I end with the recommendation of the, the planning board, but I would like to touch on that and then go back to another point. The planning board did evaluate this application back at their meeting on July 11th. And following their analysis of it, the board did vote unanimously to recommend approval to town council of this proposal to rezone the property to fully Beach Residential, BR1. Board members did note that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the town's land use plan. And I'll pull that up just for reference here. Let's see. You can see it right in this area here on the map. You can see the subject property right here where I have the, the pointer. Curiously enough, as well as the adjoining property to the east, which is zoned commercially, both of those under the future land use plan are designated for residential use as well as the commercial property across the way. So the land use plan does call for, at least the future land use map does call for these properties to be residential. The board also noted that the zoning would correct and clarify the, the zoning of a split zone property and that most of the surrounding properties were, were zoned and used residentially. Now, one thing has come up subsequently to that planning board meeting. And I, I did want to just spend a little time, because I think there'll probably be some, some discussion about this. And I did want to give you some background information on this particular idea. Within the past couple of weeks, the staff has been made aware of a, a proposal that where there's actually been a contract entered into on the adjoining property, the commercial property to the east at 106 Ascension Drive. You can see Ascension would be at the bottom of the map here in this case. Looking at this site plan here, the subject property that we're talking about tonight with the rezoning is over on the left side here, shown as a blank property right here. And I've drawn up something that I'd like to, just to highlight as I discuss this point with the council. The property has been put under contract with the intent of developing a commercial use on the property, specifically a, a law office on this property. And one of the, the issues that there, there really wasn't much discussion of at the planning board meeting, it just wasn't an issue that had been identified at that time, was the fact that in the town zoning ordinance, we do have a requirement on, for commercial development on commercial properties in that BC1 District, a 50-foot wide buffer. Within that buffer, there cannot be, the building and parking spaces cannot be located within that buffer. within that buffer. It would allow for placement of a septic tank, stormwater management, you know, pond or something of that nature, would even allow for the access drive in that area, but you could not put buildings or the actual parking spaces within that area. The issue that was brought up, that is certainly a very valid issue, is that right now, and you can see it shaded, I don't know how well it's showing up on the big thing, but you can see the dash line right here, very light gray going through that shows the existing zoning line. And right now, that fifty-foot buffer would be measured off of that line. So you can see in this area, the buffer wouldn't even go over on that property. The only area where it does is this dash line down here in the southwest corner of the property, just this little triangle down in here is where the buffer would be presently. The folks who have put the contract on the property did work with a local engineer who just quickly drafted up, you know, what I would call a fairly typical site plan. This is not a site plan proposal or anything for review at this point. It's not final, but just a kind of a typical type of development proposal. And in that has located this red line here, which shows where the buffer would be should the subject property at 108 Ascension be rezoned. So in other words, it would slide that line over into this area here. And again, what that means, the ramifications of that, is that the building, parking area would have to be outside of that line, to the east of the line over on this side. One of the things you can see on there, I do appreciate them giving us a visual that we can really, really help us analyze the ramifications of it. One of the things you can see is that there is some area over in this area, and even as, if you'll note, even as they've laid out the parking area here, this would actually be permitted here on the east side, these parking spaces, and the way that the driveway comes in, again, that can go in that buffer area. So it does not render the property undevelopable, but it does place some limitations on how it could be laid out and configured, and probably some limitations on the size of what could be developed there, the scale of development you could expect on that property. So since that is a new item that came up, I certainly did want to bring that to the council's attention. And at this point, that completes my presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions of the council members.
Go back to the lot that you have drawn in, circled in red, the lot itself, the residential lot?
Yes. You're talking about the original zoning map there?
Yeah. It appears that that lot has been platted since the subdivision was put in. The lot to the west looks like a portion of that was taken out, and it's not the original plating, the way it looks to me.
That is correct. The owner of the property who owned the subject property at 108 Ascension and what we're calling 106 Ascension, the adjoining lot to the east, the same individual owned both of those parcels. And what he did was, they did a, what's called an exempt plat, and it's something that the state has a provision for, where they added, took twenty feet from this lot here to the east and added it to this lot to the west to make that a little larger, give it a more typical residential building footprint. Otherwise, it was a fairly narrow lot prior to that. So that is correct, that originally this diagonal line began at one corner of the property and ran to the other corner of the property. It split it fifty-fifty, but now it's been moved over a little bit into the commercial area there.
But it was, previously, it wasn't in the commercial area, right? The lot to the west?
It, yes, it was. It was split, here, let me pull up this other map here, the other plat. You can see right here, this shows that this dash line going up here with the smaller dashes, that was the original
Commercial.
Boundary for this property.
Okay.
So you can see it was split exactly in half in a diagonal manner, commercial here and residential here. So it has always been, since the creation of this lot, it has always been split zoned, but recently they did move this line over to make it a little bit more commercial than it was previously.
So what happened to the original residential lot?
It is still a part of this property at 108. The original residential lot is this.
But the part that's not a part of this, is that still a separate lot? Buildable?
The other part of this...
Go back to the
Yes, sir.
...map with the red outline. Now, to the west of the red line.
Okay, this here?
Yeah, that.
Okay. That is a residential lot that is in the same, that was a developed residential lot at the time all this came here. And this was one of the, this is the original configuration of that lot. And it was developed residentially, and it's had a residence on it. So the addition was only on the east side of this property. The western boundary did not change. And actually, the northern and southern boundaries were simply extended, again, about twenty feet to the east, and then this is a new boundary line here. The original boundary line would have been in that area.
Okay. That was very confusing to me. I didn't understand that at all.
Me neither.
All right. Okay, so.
So that one lot was split zoned from the get-go?
That's correct.
But it was just a
It was just a straight line, yeah.
Yeah. Any other question? Joe, will he's up here? Okay. Joe, I guess you're off the hook right now. Lynn, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Public hearing.
Hello, my name's Jack Neighbors, officially John, but I owned 108 Ascension Drive until three or four months ago, when the current owner purchased it from me. He knew full well where the zoning line was and purchased it anyway. Matter of fact, I had the survey done that was used to demonstrate this. Okay, I own 106 Ascension Drive, and moving that zoning line would render my lot next to unsalable, and certainly devalue it greatly. And as we can see from the size of the building, that law firm is going to do, they simply wouldn't be able to use it. So I ask your consideration.
Okay. Anybody else, Lynn?
No one has signed up.
Anybody else wish to speak this portion of the public hearing?
We didn't sign up, but my name is Laura Meads.
Well, come on up, give me your name and address and...
And this is Brian Ravino from Quivell. He's the one that actually did the feasibility sketch that Mr. Hurd showed to you earlier with the red line that showed a potential site plan for 108. I'm Laura Meads, I'm one of the attorneys that put in the offer on 108 that we now have a contract for to put the law firm on 108. And so I just, I'm here, and we kind of sat through on to see how it came out, but essentially, I mean, I think our position on this is just that we weren't aware that this was going on with 106, and we put in the offer to purchase for 108, and so we had Quivell do a feasibility sketch for us for 108 on what can we do. This is, we want to put a law firm, you know, just it's Janine Evans and I, and Ms. Evans is in the back of the room, put a building on there that we own, that we can run our practice from, because we're currently renting. And we wanted to be in Kitty Hawk, and so the lot was perfect for us. We felt fortunate to find it. We had the feasibility sketch done, came back, served our purpose, we knew we could do what we wanted to do with that. Mr. Ravino from Quivell said, you know, the only concern that we might have is that because of the split zoning on the one lot, and then the zoning of the current, the 108 that we put the offer on, make sure there's nothing out there that we don't know about, because if that buffer, if they rezone that, that buffer line will move, and it's going to, you know, cut right through the middle of what we were proposing to do. And at the time, we, you know, we weren't aware of anything. And then we saw the sign go up for the public hearing on the adjacent lot, and got into some discussions with Mr. Neighbors, the current owner, and Mr. Ben Nelson, who I believe is the current owner of 106, he's the person that purchased that. And we had some discussions with them, and so we came and met with Mr. Hurd, you know, about what was going to take place. And we just, I think it became clear, and we're concerned, that if that lot is rezoned, 108 is rezoned to entirely residential, we're not sure that, we're within our due diligence period on that contract at this point, and we're not sure that we would move forward. In fact, we're reluctant to move forward with buying 108 and putting our office building on there, because with what it does, I mean, it takes a huge portion of that lot. And I think the only thing we can put in it, as Mr. Hurd pointed out, was maybe a septic filled part of the driveway, but no parking and no building can go in there. And it just substantially limits what we can do. It's not that you couldn't put a smaller office building somewhere on the lot and reconfigure everything, but, you know, one of the considerations with that is, do we really want to do a smaller building? And if we do, you're looking in that buffer, that we're going to put everything in that buffer, we can put in that buffer, which means taking down a lot of the natural topography that's already there, cutting down trees, you know, we'd like to keep as many trees as possible in moving forward and doing what we want to do. There's just a lot of considerations. And so we talked with Mr. Nelson, who owns 106, and he has had essentially a spec home, a small residential spec home built on 106. It's not quite complete, but was able, initially had some title insurance issues, they were able to get that resolved, so that he was able to get title insurance on it. I think the spec home is almost complete, and I believe the information we have was that it's even under contract to be purchased by someone. So I think the town's initial intent for why they wanted to clean this up, we had two vacant lots there, one was split zone, let's just go ahead and fix it, you know, it was, I understand the purpose behind that, but now you have, one of the lots is developed and pretty much being sold as residential without a problem. We have a contract on another one where we want to put a commercial building, and I think there's more benefit to the town in having that commercial building that we would put there and put in our business on that lot. There's more benefit in having that take place than rezoning that split lot now to entirely residential and limiting the commercial uses on that other lot. So, you know, I have Mr. Ravino here, and he's prepared that feasibility sketch, but we would just ask the board to consider that, because we really would like to put our office in Kitty Hawk and put it on that lot and move forward with that if we don't, you know, if the town doesn't push forward with rezoning 106. So, if you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just like to add that the rezon to residential of 108 would certainly affect the existing contract that's in place, may not affect the ability to develop 106. However, you know, it would certainly decrease the density over there and wouldn't allow Ms. Meads and Ms. Evans to do what they truly want to do on that lot. So, and I understand that the town has been making attempts to fix some of the split zone areas, and maybe if that certainly is necessary, that you all also consider, you know, a rezoned commercial, since a lot of times residential is allowed in commercial. Maybe not by right, but it's typically permissible through the town.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Let the record show that no one else came forward, and motion go back in record session.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I? Opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make a few comments, if I could.
Okay.
First of all, as Joe explained, this was what we call, I guess, a map cleanup, which I think is desirable, generally speaking, but what it really amounts to is it makes it more convenient for the planners and, you know, the town in terms of management of, you know, where the zoning is and all that sort of thing. But we have a situation where the residential lot is developed residential, and it's not necessary to change this zoning in order for him to have that house. It does do damage to the adjacent property, which is zoned commercially now, and by changing this zoning, it would do him further damage by moving that, requiring that setback. So I think for all those reasons, I would like to make a motion to deny the request to change the zoning, just leave it as it is and move on from there. I don't know if we need a statement about the plan, because we're not changing the zoning. Do we have to state something about the plan?
Do we have to do anything?
I think all we do is
I mean, if we do nothing, it just stays the way it is, right?
I think Joe wrote you. Well, he did, but I'm questioning whether we really need that. Do I just make a motion to deny the request?
We made the request, actually, so.
Yeah, it's a town request, too. It's not even from a property owner.
Right, right. It was to clear up, it was to clean up the zoning line, which I agree with, but I didn't know about the circumstances that it created.
Right.
And so I'm in favor of not doing it because of, you know, not knowing the full impact.
I'll just make, okay, my motion is to deny, period.
I would second that.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion?
This is the most confusing thing that I've dealt with since I was here. I did, I did not understand what this office complex is all about until I got here. I just didn't understand what you were doing there. And I do not, Steve, I still don't understand how a property can, the lines can be redrawn in a split zone without proper title. How does that work?
Well, you had common ownership of those lots, and they had an exempt plat where they resubdivided, but you still had two conforming lots. You didn't change anything, except the boundary.
Except the, yeah, the zoning boundary.
Now, in the future, and I'll go along with this, I see the problem, and I'd like to have the office space there, too. I mean, I might need a lawyer, but if I have to do much of this, I really need a lawyer, yeah. But in the future, the two lot owners, if they start selling and trading or whatever they do in the future, will that present problems for them, title companies?
No.
No, not for the title company alone. If nothing has changed, that lot where the house is being built, that's still in the commercial zone.
So he's got a house half in a commercial zone, half in a
But that's a permitted use of the zone.
Yeah.
And that's the only way he can get away with it. Wow. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Well, the other thing, too, is, you know, if you, I went over to that property, and there, the house is, you know, almost done, it appears to be, and there really is a nice buffer area there that almost goes right down to the end of the house, if I recall. So it's not like, it's not like the commercial development is really going to do anything to make that house less desirable, in my opinion.
The fact they knew what it was when they purchased it. You know, and I was in favor of cleaning up the zoning lines, but I didn't realize what we're creating. Okay, any more comments?
My only comment is I want to thank Joe for putting the site plan in here, because it helped explain a lot
Yeah.
...to me on what was happening, so I appreciate that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Respect a new building, starting.
Next, we expect a site plan for the lawyers, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. Not, we might change it.
I guess I might say that this site plan looks fine, but I'm not sure that it necessarily meets all the requirements until our staff's gone through a complete review, so don't think we're approving this.
Okay, next is planning. A site plan review. Caldwell Banker's addition.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Next item we have is a site plan review for a proposed project about a second floor addition to the existing Caldwell Banker Seaside Realty Building at 4,900 North Crowington Highway. The proposed addition would be over the northern portion of the building. On your site plan is a, put up here on the screen. We're talking about the area here, the hatch. So, it's over the northern portion of the building, approximately a little over 1,500 square feet in size for the addition. If approved, with the addition, the total amount of office space on the property would be around 7,800 square feet between the addition and the existing development. The intent is to accommodate Seaside Realty's rental and sales divisions within the same building, whereas right now they're located in two different areas in town. I won't cover a lot of the details, but certainly be glad to answer any questions the council has of details about the property or proposal. What I did want to do tonight was highlight the key issues that the staff looked at, the things that turned out to be the most important aspects as far as the changes to the property as a result of this proposal. Property was originally developed back in 1989, 1990, with a 3,500 square foot building here to the south. And for those of you who've been around a while, might remember, there's a Domino's Pizza building, 1,200 square feet in the building to the north. They were actually detached buildings at that point. Since that original approval, they were combined, and more usable space was added in the second floor of the portion of the building to the south. The use itself as an office is a permitted use in the B C One Beach Commercial District, so there's no issue there. And what we're doing tonight is purely a technical review to be assured that the property complies with all of the development standards of the town. The key things we took a look at are access, and there are really two aspects to that. We have external access, which in this case, this is Crowton Highway running north-south in this area. And then we have Bennett Street, this, just one little stub coming in here, going east-west. The property presently accesses from two different points off of Bennett Street. That access would not change. There would still be the same exact two access points. So, the external access wouldn't change. The biggest change on this would be to the internal. And if you're looking at the traffic circulation within the site, right now, you can do a U, you know, come all, you know, come in this, out that way, or vice versa. One of the changes being proposed in relation to this project would involve the removal, you can see here with the hatched lines, the diagonal lines in this area here, that area, that area of pavement is proposed to be removed. And there are benefits to the applicant for that in the provision of the necessary amount of parking spaces. There is also benefit in improving the stormwater management on the property. So, they are proposing to remove that as part of this project. Obviously, the biggest concern there deals with the fire department and emergency access, so we did check with them, and the fire department expressed no concern with that. They're still able to pull fully in and easily access any side and serve any side of the building. So, they did not see that as a problem that would, or something that would create an issue for them in the future. The next real key thing that we looked at had to do with parking. You know, we have a circumstance here where we're adding a decent amount of additional office space to a site that is actually presently non-conforming in terms of the amount of parking that exists presently. So, the applicant was asked to go back and take a look, that if they wanted approval of this project, they needed to provide an appropriate amount of parking on site. According to our calculations, there would be 32 parking spaces required on site. Those calculations are laid out in the staff report. The applicant with this proposal, the site plan as shown, has provided 33 spaces. And what I'd like to do is just kind of run through how we got that. Originally, there were 22 spaces on this site. The applicant has added four new parking spaces. This is an existing grass, you know, landscaped area up in this northwest corner. They would be taking the existing curb line, extending it to the outer part of that, and be able to add four parking spaces and the, you know, the area to make that turn into them. The second thing they did relates to the removal of the drive aisle. As you see here, they're removing this, they're adding, but by doing that, they're able to add two parking spaces, one on the western side of that and two on the eastern side. So, a total of four parking spaces in that area that used to be part of the drive that encircled the building. The other spaces back here at the rear of the building, you see there are two parking spaces right here. This was on the original site plan designated as a loading area for the commercial use at the time. And you can see the darker area here was the, originally approved as a dumpster pad for this site. So, those spaces are shown there. And finally, the last one was, there was a little extra space up front here, and there was also a, you know, we typically call a parking island, sort of a, you know, little curb landscaped area in here, that would be proposed to be removed. And that's an area where, in addition to being a parking space, it is also an ADA handicapped accessible parking space. So, they would have two ADA spaces right there near the front of the property. That made a lot of sense as far as a potential location for that. So, the applicant has, is proposing to make these changes to accommodate the need for additional parking on site. Just to go back and touch on a couple of those items relating to these two spaces here at the back, I mentioned two other changes. One of them is the removal of the loading zone. I want to point out that the town does not require a loading zone for this type of use at this scale, due to the size of this building and the type of use it is. There is no loading zone required, so although that was part of the original approval, it would not necessarily need to be a part of the site plan approval today to meet the town's standards. Secondly, the dumpster here and removal of that. In talking with the applicant and in information he provided at the planning board meeting, apparently the business has been operating using roll carts, you know, our typical trashcans for quite some time, and they would propose to continue using roll carts to serve their office operation. They don't have a, you know, particularly large need, you know, for dumpsters or things. It's not a retail place where they have large boxes, or a restaurant where there's a lot of trash being created there. And so, what they're proposing is removal of that area there, where it's actually more publicly visible, and moving the roll carts to, they'd be screening them underneath this new set of stairs that would go up to the second floor, where these offices would be located. So, they would be tucked in under that stairway. So, those are two other changes that would be proposed as part of this. In looking at the land use plan, it's not something that the council is required to consider as part of a site plan approval. However, the planning board in their review did note that they felt the proposed expansion was consistent with the designation of this property as a commercial shopping and working area in the land use plan. And at their meeting on August the 15th, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this site plan to add the second story at Caldwell Banker Seaside Realty. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the council members have.
I just, I have a curiosity question. The stairs are going to the second floor in what I call the rear of the building. Is there an entrance to the front side to the second floor? And is there an entrance, is there still stairs internal to the building? I know we don't-
The applicant has not submitted floor plans at this time or anything related to the building itself. Okay. Mike Robinson, the engineer for the project is here. If you'd like to know, he may be able to answer that better than I could.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, do you have an interior stairwell?
Yeah, there's a, when you, they're going to connect, the south part of the building is already two-story.
Right, right.
And then they're going to add a second story addition up here. There is a stairwell here.
Okay.
Or it's actually, it's a nice-
It'll be connected in-
And that's just going to be a secondary access.
Okay, okay. That's fine, thank you. It's not relevant to the site plan, I'm just curious. No, I have nothing else.
No, I'll make a motion.
All right.
I move to grant approval of the site plan to construct a second floor addition to the existing Caldwell Banker Seaside Realty Building at 4,900 North Crowington Highway.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to add, I hope they don't move their sign, because I'd never find my turn to go home at night in the winter without it.
You need to get a GPS. Okay, next is call for a public hearing, Board of Adjustments, changes in North Carolina statutes.
I move that we set a public hearing for text amendment, an applicant, application to update the standards of section 42-69 through 42-74, dealing with Board of Adjustment Appeals and Variances, to comply with the recently adopted North Carolina Section Law 20-13-126, an act to clarify and modernize statutes regarding zoning boards of adjustment. And a public hearing be set for, or scheduled for October 7th, 2013. Town Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, new business. Approval of bids for Hawk Street Flood Water Management System.
Mayor, a pre-bid conference for the Hawk Street Flood Water Management System was held on August the 21st of this year, and a bid opening was held on Wednesday, August the 28th, for the purpose of installing a sump basin, 208 linear feet of pipe, installing a pump connection assembly, and restoring a concrete driveway and asphalt roadway of NC 12. Bids for the project were opened at 3:00 on Wednesday, August 28th, by Mr. John DeLucia of Albemarle Associates, and I was witnessed by myself and the town clerk, Lynn Morris. We were, there were three bids received, and the lowest bid and best bid was submitted by EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services, in the amount of $24,759. Mr. DeLucia recommends the award of the bid to EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services, which is, letters attached, and funding for this project will come from the Powell Bill Funds, which has a present balance of $352,642.10. Mr. DeLucia is here, have any questions regarding the bid?
Any questions?
No.
Motion?
I move to approve bid submitted by EnviroTech Unlimited in the amount of $24,759 for the Hawk Street Flood Water Management System. Said funds to come from the Powell Bill Fund. I further authorize the town manager to sign and the town clerk to attest a contract for this project.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is 10B, Budget Amendment.
We should be finished by October 8th.
That quick?
I hope so. Yeah, but right now, we're hoping to issue their notice to proceed on Monday, and it's going to take about two weeks to get the pipe and material here. It'll take about a week to do the work we can have, so October 8th is our completion scheduled date.
All that permitting, all that permitting, for something that's going-
That's the hard part. The engineering's the easy part anymore.
Yeah, it is.
We'll continue on.
I do have a question. Did you ever get clarification, when we got the okay from CAMO to do all of this stuff, we were also asking the question, do we need a permit to pump? Did you ever get clarification on that?
We have not gotten a response back, and that doesn't come from CAMO, that comes from Division of Water Quality.
Whoever.
And the last time George checked on that, they were having that discussion internally between the Elizabeth City Office, the Morehead Office, and the Raleigh Office. And George Wood had reported that they had been making some progress. I do not know exactly what that means in state government, but no, we have never gotten a response to our letter or anything from the Division of Water Quality or dealer.
But it is being pursued.
It is being pursued.
And if we put it in, we just pump, then maybe we'll get an answer.
Yeah, that's right.
What has happened in the last couple of situations where we asked for a permit from Division of Water Quality Management, is just by making a phone call, we've been able to secure the permit without any problems. So, I think that has helped the situation a lot.
Yeah, they've been better the last two times, yeah.
Better to work with, yes, sir.
But it would, if we already knew.
Well, yes.
Because what we were at.
I think with it, when we sent them that letter, we put a lot of justifications within that letter that probably hadn't previously been considered by anybody, and that still stands, you know, the justification.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You just wonder about pushing the issue, though, you know, because it's always better to beg forgiveness than to ask permission.
Sometimes.
Okay, now, 10B, Budget Amendment for the same item.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Two for the Hawk Street Flood Water Management System, that's a housekeeping item, by the way.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 11, Reports and General Comments from the Town Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, speaking of Clean Water Management Trust Fund, we had, you know, submitted an application to them some time ago for the stormwater management improvements, and we've received a letter from them recently indicating that the state legislature had decided to shift their programs to the Division of Water Infrastructure and State Water Infrastructure Authority. In order to be considered for grant, we would have to resubmit our application for Clean Water State Revolving Fund by today, actually September the 3rd, and we would just receive the information, I think it was last week, and so we really don't have a lot of time to respond, so I'm suggesting to council that we just reconsider the application in the future, if we want to do so.
Okay.
Also, we got a compliment- Also, we got a compliment to our police department. Received a compliment from Larry Gray of Gray's Grocery, Gray Store, excuse me, here in Kitty Hawk about a presentation on shoplifting made by Brian Strickland of our police department in July. He made that to some 50 employees, and Mr. Gray feels that this is important for employees to be aware of the growing problem of shoplifting on the outer banks. Also, he had a compliment on our recycling center. Mr. Herbert Arzinger wrote in and praised the recycling center, especially the work of Joseph Cornett, who provides a courteous, friendly, and helpful service even during the hot days when he assists in disposable recyclable items. Also had a compliment on the Public Works response for Mr. Chuck Sowers that lives at 406 North Parker Street. He wanted to write, he wrote in and wanted to thank them for the quick response to his request to trim trees and vines that were growing over the pavement. Mr. Sowers had made his request to Public Works Department while they were mowing grass on North Parker Street, and the crew returned the same day, took care of Mr. Sowers's request. And Mr. Sowers was quite impressed with the quick response of the Public Works Department. Also, we had a compliment on our planning department, Mr. Valento of 214 West Kitty Hawk Road, wrote in and complimented Donna Heffernan in the planning department for her response and assistance providing Mr. Valento with flood map information on his property. Mr. Valento had to provide his mortgage company with a current information on the flood zone for his property, which had just recently changed. And the last item I wanted to mention to council was as far as our attempt to establish the municipal service districts for beach nourishment. I thought we were ready to set dates for a public hearing on the municipal service districts, but we will be meeting with the county and their financial consultant, actually tomorrow, to discuss the financing of the beach nourishment projects and possibly obtain a better idea of what it will cost the town. Based on this information, I would like to defer the establishment of dates for the public hearing on the municipal service districts at this time. Hopefully, once we have that information from the county, the meeting with them tomorrow, we'll be able to report back to council and give you all a better idea of what we're looking at in terms of a time period for the adoption of the MST maps.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Reports and general comments from the town attorney.
Nothing for you tonight, Mayor.
You've been awful quiet. Reports and general comments from town council?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Emily, nothing? Carrie, nothing? Me, nothing? Public comment? We have any public comment? Once, twice? Sure? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.